Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, July ninth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual auctions for public viewing and participation. With that, call this meeting to order. And Krista, if you could please follow the roll.
Councilmember Soltes.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartsok.
Here.
Councilmember Hardjauzen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. With that, we'll move into approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next is public communication. First up is our great Covington Chamber Commerce Quarterly Update by our outstanding Chamber Executive, Dana. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you. Yes, I should have just left that alone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, good evening. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to thank you for your support, but also to share what we've been up to. So, thanks for the invitation. I say this every single quarter, but I'm going to say it was a busy quarter at the Covington Chamber. This one was really, really busy. We had a Covington Makers Market, Restaurant Week, and we launched Ready, Set, Play. So, that kept us very, very busy, but it was all great stuff. The first Restaurant Week, we did kickoff, the kickoff here, and it was well-attended. We had about thirty-five people. It was a lot of fun, and we got some great feedback from our restaurants and also diners. We're definitely going to do it again. So, we're looking at next spring for the next one. I don't want to keep doing back-to-back events, so try to be more realistic in the future. Also, want to thank Diana Patterson, from the Patterson team, who was the one who originally came up with the idea. She and two of our other members helped us pull this off, so I really appreciate her support. Covington Makers Market was Saturday, May the fourth. Apologies to Covington Rotary for once again planning our event the same day. This one, we had seventy vendors, a couple of food trucks, bouncy houses, and live music with four different performers. Unfortunately, this is the first of our six markets where we had lousy weather. So, we had great attendance for the first two hours, and the rest of it, not so great. But our vendors had a good attitude and were really positive. We had eighteen of them immediately reserved their spot for our October twelfth market, so that was, that was exciting. And Ready, Set, Play, as you know, is underway. We kicked that off two weeks ago. We held two kickoff events at Covington Community Park on June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Between those two events and an event at the library during that same period of time, we gave out more than four hundred lanyards. So, we've got more, at least four hundred kids that are going to do some part of the program. And throughout the summer, for kids who didn't pick their lanyards up, we've got four lanyard pickup stops, stops, including Covington City Hall. So, we're expecting a very busy season. And once again, we appreciate the city's partnership. And Regan, and Cetus for bringing this idea to us and allowing us to partner with you. It's, it's always a lot of fun. So, summer is a slower time for us, so we're going to take the advantage, advantage of the, the slow time to focus on a couple of things. The first thing I want to tell you about is our Fall Makers Market, Saturday, October twelfth. And for the first time, we are using a new space, Covington Town Center on Wax Road, so just about three-quarters of a mile down the road from Real Life Church. So, we want to help this, we want to support the city, trying to activate that space and trying to bring people to that space. And I think as our market grows, that we're going to have more space for parking in particular. But we're really looking forward to trying the new space. So, because we had eighteen reservations already, we are doing a soft launch. In fact, we did it today. So, you are the first to know publicly. We invited the eighteen vendors who had reservations already to apply for the market, and we've also contacted all of our past sponsors. We have already got two people signed up in the first half-day, so that was exciting. We are planning to bring back Monster Bash this fall. We're going to partner with the Weatherly Inn, but because we have outgrown their space, we're considering doing it at the Community Room here in October. And we're going to, it's family-friendly. We're hoping to do it as both a fundraiser, but a way to bring our members and their families together. So, we're really looking forward to that. And keeping with the Makers Market theme, there are two very popular holiday markets that are no longer doing holiday markets. So, we thought we would try to fill the gap. So, we are probably, we are hoping to host a Holiday Market on Saturday, December fourteenth. So, we're currently looking for a space to do that, and if we find one, then we're going to secure it and plan for that. Speaking with the vendor community specifically, they really like having markets so close to the holidays, because that's, you know, a great time for last-minute shoppers. So, and having an indoor event is a lot less work than having an outdoor event. So, looking forward to maybe a smaller scale, but less work. And also, so many of you already know that we did a nonprofit fundraiser for all our nonprofit members. We're going to change it up a little bit this year. We're going to do that again in conjunction with our Ugly Sweater Party, but instead of doing it at lunch, we're going to do it like three to five in the afternoon, because we're getting feedback from members that they really like doing events during their workday. And we're going to do it at new member Dave and Buster's. So, to kind of add that fun vibe. So, really excited about doing that this year. In addition, we're going to focus on growth. We have a new membership coordinator that I'm onboarding right now, and once we get going, I will share her name and information with you, but really trying to encourage new businesses or businesses who aren't members or have been members to come check us out. We're inviting them to be our guests at events and just learn what we're about, so we can learn more about them too and what's important to our business. And next up, board elections. So, between now and the middle of August, I will be recruiting new board members. We have at least two people who have to rotate out of voting positions, because they have reached the, the expiration date of their term. I can't think what else I'd like to say. So, we've got a couple of spots available, so if anybody's interested or knows somebody who might be good, in particular, we would like to fill a slot in healthcare and also education. We've unfortunately lost Lori Paxton from the Kent School District, so really sorry to lose her. And we lost Mark Smith from MultiCare when he moved out of the area. So, two, two big holes, and those are two industries in particular we would really like to fill. But we are open to talking to anybody who has a, who has a desire to serve. Membership is holding steady, but in the summertime, it just doesn't really grow, so we are going to try to take advantage of that. But, you know, better than losing members. So, we'll take that. So, as always, I'm going to thank each of you for your support, for all the events that you come to, for just reaching out, sharing things on social media, whatever part you play, it contributes to our success and helping us take things to the next level. And I would be happy to entertain. Any questions, comments, suggestions?
Anybody have any questions for Dana? Just thank you.
No.
I mean immensely thank you for all that you do, not just for the Chamber, but for Cetus, for the community, business community, and all of our residents. I mean, just thank you from the bottom of our hearts. You did a great job, and it's, it's such an honor to partner with you.
Thank you. It is my pleasure.
Thank you, Dana. Next up is, we have some proclamations. So, if council could join me in front of the dais, please.
Hey, this, I enjoy reading proclamations, but tonight is really a fun night. And we have, this is the night that we get to honor our Citizen of the Year and our Honorary Citizen of the Year. So, first, I would like to read the nominations for our Citizen of the Year, and then I'll read the proclamation. And after we give nomination, I'll have this person join us. This person is an exceptional citizen, whose impact resonates through Crestwood Elementary by embracing the transformative power of art and education. As a pioneering art docent at the school, she has touched countless young lives by bringing creativity and inspiration into their classrooms on a monthly basis. Her dedication extends even further as she became the first to introduce art lessons into the special needs class, fostering inclusivity and providing unique opportunities for these students to express themselves through art. Moreover, her passion for art and education shines through her remarkable initiative in curating and art auction for the school community. Through her efforts, she successfully raised almost five thousand dollars, a testament to her unwavering commitment to enhancing the educational experience through art. This generous contribution has not only enriched the students' learning environment, but has also ensured that future generations at Crestwood Elementary will have access to the necessary art supplies to continue exploring their creativity. Her selfless dedication and tireless patriciancy for arts education truly make her an outstanding citizen, whose impact will be felt for years to come at Crestwood Elementary. Her commitment to enriching the lives of students through art exemplifies the transformative power of community involvement and serves as an inspiration to us all. And that was inspiring to read. So, I would like to, I'll invite our nominee up here, well, our Citizen of the Year, and then I'll read the proclamation. So, Megan McBride, if you could join us up here. We have a proclamation. Well, we're going to keep this and give it to you. Whereas since the city's first birthday, the city council has made it a tradition to select a Citizen of the Year to honor individuals who have made a difference in our community. And whereas the city council voted to honor Megan McBride as Covington's Citizen of the Year in two thousand twenty-four for her extraordinary dedication and commitment to the youth in our community. And whereas the pioneering art docent at Crestwood Elementary School, Megan enriched her students' education through art and touched countless young lives by bringing creativity and inspiration into their classroom. And whereas Megan introduced inclusive art lessons at Crestwood Elementary, providing unique opportunities for all students to express themselves through art. And whereas Megan organized an auction and raised nearly five thousand dollars to ensure that her students and subsequent classes of students will have access to the necessary supplies to continue exploring art. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby recognize Saturday, July twentieth, as Megan McBride Day. You have to write in the parade. You have to beam up on stage. Yeah. You have to get out in front of people, but.
This is a little hard for me, but I'll do it.
You will succeed. So, in the city of Covington, and we ask all citizens, join us in special observance and recognition of her contribution to the community.
Thank you. Be sure with it. I will say that, thank you all. This year has been truly amazing. I am just so happy and blessed to have been able to touch so many students' lives. Bringing art to them really is my favorite thing to do every single day. In any way I can shape any child's life and improve it and touch their lives with art, I am just happy to be there. So, like, I'm, it's been a great year. Been so much fun.
Well, thank you for everything you've done.
And we'll see you at our national event. I'll report.
Oh, I haven't even heard.
Let's get a Kenny off, guys. We've got a little bit. I think some of them were trying to take photos. Do you want to get a?
Just like this.
Okay. One, two, three.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Krista, now or here? And he had a broken leg. All right. Yeah, I'm rubbing off the wrong way. So, next is our honorary Citizen of the Year. And I'll read the nomination. I would like to nominate for the city of Covington, honorary Citizen of the Year, is an amazing human and a phenomenal being. He is graduating Kentwood, or excuse me, Kent. And she's signing a letter for Katie, and that's what this. I signed her letter, too. He is graduating Kentley High School with honors this year, as well as receiving an AA degree from Green River College through the Running Start Program. He started volunteering at the storehouse food pantry in Covington during middle school. He continued volunteering through high school and was spending hundreds of volunteer hours there, hundreds, so much so that he was offered a job. He started his part-time and has worked his way to a full-time position managing the warehouse and helping to serve the food insecurity. He orders and helps pick up food, facilitates food distribution, manages the volunteers, backpack buddies, and organizes community events such as food hygiene and the pet drive. He was selected to serve as a City of Covington Youth Council member, in which he is completing his second year. He engages in yearly community events such as the Rotary Auction. He took my money. Holiday lighting and awareness walks. He traveled to Olympia as an activist supporting the city of Covington in youth action days and hunger action days. For years, he has enjoyed volunteering with the Elk Run Farm, which helps provide food to the storehouse and the surrounding community. At Kentlake High School, he is officer of the Interact Club, which supports community service and leadership opportunity. He is an officer in both band and felding crew, which provides mentorship to fellow students. He is a valuable and well-respected member of the Covington community, and he demonstrates service about self every day. Ryland, if you could join us. This is my favorite name. Proclamation is, whereas since the city's first birthday, the city council has made it a tradition to select an honorary Citizen of the Year to honor individuals who have made a difference in our community. And whereas the city council voted to honor Ryland as Covington's honorary Citizen of the Year in two thousand twenty-four for his dedication to improving the quality of life for residents. And whereas throughout his school career, Ryland spent hundreds of hours volunteering at our Elk Run Food Bank Storehouse. And now, as an employee, manages the warehouse, organizes volunteers, and coordinates community events that support those facing food insecurity. And whereas Ryland served on the Covington Youth Council and is involved in numerous volunteer projects such as the Rotary Club of Covington Auction, awareness walks, various school clubs that promote service, leadership, and youth mentorship, and the Elk Run Farm.
Yeah.
And you've got your AA degrees. Damn. The Elk Run Farm is a stable farm that provides fresh food to the community, and whereas Ryland is an exemplary member of our community, and his efforts to go above and beyond as a young leader should be recognized and applauded. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby recognize Sunday, July twenty-first, as Ryland Wrinkly Day in the city of Covington, and ask all citizens to join us in this special observance and recognition of his contribution to the year. Ryland?
One, two, three.
I'd just like to say thank the council for this honor. Thank my friends and family for supporting me. I couldn't have done without you. I like working with friends and kids.
Yeah. I mean, you know, at some point, there might be a room up here. Well, keep us in mind. So, thank you. Congratulations again to each of you. And with that, let's eat cake. Let's take a ten-minute reception and have cake. Congratulations.
Still here.
Yeah.
Literally cool right now.
Good evening. We are back from our reception honoring our Citizen of the Year and honorary Citizen of the Year. With that, we'll move into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debates and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom and dial star six to unmute by phone. Notice campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at City Hall or during council meetings, including public comments, is prohibited by state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Seeing nobody in the audience for public comment, is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Please raise your hand. I see nobody online, so I will close this public comment period, and we will have a second opportunity towards the end of our evening. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C-one through C-four.
Summit?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes. Next up is new business, item one. And we're going to address items one through four. And Regan, it is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like the mayor said, we'll do items one through four together since they're identical revisions. The council asked us to bring back, so this is representing the Arts Equity Cultural Social Justice Human Services and Parks and Recreation Commissions. And if council chooses, they may make one motion to revise all those resolutions. So, the annual summit this year, council discussed removing the three-mile radius rule for our commissions and replacing it with just Covington residents can apply some commissions. We then had a little follow-up discussion about possibly including a three-mile radius, but only for unincorporated King County areas. So, what's before you tonight is those revised resolutions that say to apply for a commission, you must be, must live within the city limits of Covington or within a three-mile radius in unincorporated King County. So, essentially, what we've done is eliminate people from other cities applying for commissions within the city of Covington. So, we pulled up a list of those who are currently serving that would be ineligible with this new revision. A couple of years ago, we would have had a lot more. At this point, we have three. We have one on the Arts Commission, one on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, and one on the Human Services Commission. So, for those seats held by these people that live, they all live in the city of Kent, they would not be eligible to reapply for that position as the revisions are written that are before you tonight. Council does have the authority to grandfather those positions or those people in, if you'd like, so that when their term expires, they could reapply. If they don't reapply, then it would have to be filled by someone pursuant to the new rules. But that's a discussion you could have tonight if, if you desire. So, that's what's before you tonight. We're happy to address any questions you may have.
Okay, before we go to questions, what Regan was saying, Sean and I talked also about doing all four of these as one motion, since they are all the same language. And I am very comfortable grandfathering those current commissioners in, so that when their term is up, if they wish to reapply, I personally am very comfortable with that, and if council is comfortable with that. But first off, let's go with any questions that council may have. Then I'm going to rephrase this motion. The potential motion is to read to adopt a resolution revising the Arts Commission, Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, Human Services Commission, and Parks and Recreation Commission membership rules, including a grandfather clause for those current members, for when their term expires, they may reapply. Does that work for council?
So.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think this is a really great compromise. I know that there are some commissions that are, that deal with sensitive, well, funding for one thing, and city planning, and that can be, it can be very sensitive for residents in our city, because it is their money that's being spent, and the codes specifically impact them. So, I think this is a nice balance between excluding anyone outside of the city, city to apply for commissions, and prevents a little bit of what could potentially be seen as a conflict of interest. So, and as grandfathered, and I mean, if somebody's doing a great job, it, it doesn't seem to make sense to penalize them for that if they've been doing fine, so.
Thank you, Beth. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. And I agree with everything that Beth said. This, this makes sense. I believe that that three-mile radius with unincorporated King County will really help with the youth council, because there are students that go to Kentlake that are caught in that old triangle of, it's not Kent, and it's not Covington, it's unincorporated. And and so, and with grandfathering, I feel that we've got some great people serving, and we are already short on three Arts, Equity, and Human Services. So, pulling in extra personnel would hurt us even more.
Thank you, Debbie. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution revising the Arts Commission, Equity Cultural Social Justice Commission, Human Services Commission, and the Parks and Recreation Commission membership rules, and also grandfather, including a clause, grandfathering existing commissioners that are on the commission, that when their term is up, they can reapply. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Next up is new business item number five, consider an ordinance revising the Planning Commission membership rules. Regan?
So, again, this is the same language. We didn't include this in that first batch, because it's an ordinance per state statute for the Planning Commission, but identical language as was included in the, the other four commission rules.
And do we have anyone outside of these? Okay. All right. Does council have any questions for Regan on this? All right. We have before us a potential to take action to a Uh, we have before us a potential to take action to approve an ordinance amending the Covington Municipal Code Section two dot one five dot zero two zero to revise planning commissioner qualifications. It's a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, just to say that everything that was discussed is to the first, uh, motion applies here.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Christina, would you like?
I will echo that as well. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve an ordinance amending the Covington Municipal Code Section two point one five point zero two zero to revise planning commissioner qualifications. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay, so I need to slow down. No. So that concludes all of our new business. Um, next up is future agenda items. We have our next council meeting on July twenty-third, um, at six o'clock with CEDIS interviews, council meeting at seven. And then does council have anything they'd like to see on a future agenda down the road in the fall? Alright, seeing none, let's move into council staff comments. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, National Night Out, uh, is August sixth. We'll be getting some signups here in the next couple of weeks, once I get all the neighborhoods uh, to sign up, uh, and then I'll send those out for, or Krista will send those out for you to, uh, to select from. Um, if you are aware of a neighborhood that hasn't signed up, because we have some that signed up previously, haven't signed up yet this time, uh, you might reach out to them and see if they're gonna be doing it, because we have some that I haven't heard from at all, even though I've tried to contact them. Um, and then secondly, we had a meeting with our retailers today at loss prevention. Uh, portion of the retailers, uh, we had some new ones that joined us. Nice. Um, we reiterated, uh, what we have been doing and, um, and worked with them with networking and some of the stuff that we're looking for. Very productive meeting, very appreciative of the retailers, uh, participating with us. Really wanna take a big chunk out of organized retail, Beth. So that's it for me.
Great. Thanks, Adam. Ethan?
Uh, nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Uh, oh, Ethan, I just wanna say that, um, Megan is interested in the Arts Commission, um, our Citizen of the Year tonight, and so I asked her to apply and we'll just keep her on file for when we have an opening for interview.
Sounds great.
I talked to her about it as well.
Uh, Dawn?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I have nothing for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
There's no executive session tonight, and I have no further report. Thank you.
I'm glad. Thank you, Mark. Regan?
I do have something. Um, as you know, we have a ballot measure on the August, uh, ballot. Uh, would council like to do, or at least have brought before you a resolution supporting that ballot measure? If so, we could do it at our next council meeting.
Comes up to do that. Okay.
Yes, I mean, are you? I mean, I'm all for supporting it, but that, okay?
Yes, yes, that's what I was wondering.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we do that for the school district also.
Yeah.
And if it wasn't okay, I wouldn't tell you.
Just turn to that.
No, that's good. So we'll have that, uh, we'll add that to the next agenda then.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Krista?
Good evening, Council. I have nothing for you this evening.
Thank you. Joe?
So I have, uh, an interview to be a social studies teacher in federal way this week. Um, and debating on, on this, how that goes, I'll announce other information at our next council meeting, uh, about a future for the fall. Other than that, I hope everyone's staying cool, uh, because it is very hot out there. I got in my car today. I said it was a hundred. And I, I gotta think that it's a little off, but still, I hope you're all staying nice and cool and enjoying the summer and getting outside and, uh, having fun.
And then tomorrow night at SCA pick?
Yep.
They're bringing back?
Uh, it does not actually look like we're bringing you back tomorrow night. I've looked at that. The big thing on there is a, uh, discussion on solid waste rates, and we are gonna talk about the nuclear radiation health effects, because you know, we, we haven't learned that in seventh grade, so we're gonna learn about that and, um, n- nothing about the pick rules on this one. It looks like it hasn't made it to, through the Equity Camp yet. I will, I'll know more tomorrow morning, because.
So they're gonna bring something to you tomorrow night to discuss. So if, um, when, at the next council meeting?
Okay.
Because it's gone through Equity, um, cultural. So I heard about it today.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure Da- I have a meeting with, uh, Chris and David tomorrow morning, so I'm sure something will get brought up to me.
Okay. I'll be curious to hear how it goes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Um, I was curious if we've had any, uh, reports or information and, and with anyone in our community struggling with the heat, just since a lot of our minds don't have AC.
To our knowledge, we, we've not. We do pay attention to that and track it when these heat waves come. We have put some information out about, go to the library if you need and things like that. In years past, I think the last two years, or maybe it was just last year, we did a cooling center here. Um, through the whole week, we only had one person show up for about thirty minutes, you know? Um, but no, we've not received anything like that. Andy's, um, our emergency management, he's, you know, coordinating with other cities and things, but, um, uh, haven't had any issues with it yet. So. We did have the pop-up splash, uh, part today, so that helped. It was awesome. It was super cool. Yeah.
Awesome. Um, only thing I have to add is, uh, looking forward to Covington days, hoping it is not as warm as last year. I kind of fortunately had to leave right after the parade for another engagement and was not disappointed because it was hot, so I'm hoping, um, this year is not too bad.
Thank you. Debbie?
Well, to follow on to that, last year at, when we were working at the, the city booth, the Parks and Rec booth had swamp cooler, portable little swamp coolers. I think it was Sean that I was working with and we asked where they got them. They had them at Home Depot for like thirty-nine dollars. I heard sometime after that that there were a couple more purchased to use at other booths. Do you know if we're gonna have one for the city booth?
We try to just let the fund department have those and the rest of us suffer. Um, no, I don't think there are plans, but I actually have one at home. I have a fan that, yeah, has a hose that hooks into a five-gallon bucket and kind of mists, so I could bring that, that would help.
Thank you. That would be amazing, because it was hot.
It was hot in the booth. It was actually hotter in the booth than to stand outside.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
And we were, yes, we were, we were going over to the Parks and Rec booth to try to cool down and run back.
I know, I saw the note, don't explore other booths, and I was like, what if it was too scary?
Oh, good thought, Debbie.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I have a question on the latest addition of the flyers that we got for the sales tax increase. Are we still okay to use those? They've got the city name down at the bottom and they were printed on city paper.
Yes, as long as it's the neutral one that's fact-centric that we provided after filing.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we can do that up until what date? What's the cutoff that we shouldn't be out?
And, and we'll, we plan, oh, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Regan. And to answer your question, we've, the fact sheet is the one fact sheet that we're allowed under the RCW that the mayor mentioned regarding public comments and not using public facilities. Because the city has traditionally and historically distributed information and flyers like this, it's considered to be in the normal course of conduct for the city to continue to distribute, uh, the flyers in the ma- in the manner that we've chosen to do so, whether that's website, walking routes, or otherwise. So if you have any specific questions about any usage of the, the neutral flyers, please let me know and I'm happy to answer those.
Great, thank you. Um, and Casey, uh, thank you for providing the, the little, um, half-sheet flyers on the B and O tax that I will take to the, um, Chamber Commerce luncheon this week. Uh, we know that it was emailed out to business owners, but we talked about that there could also be some fallout of people that hadn't heard it, so, yeah, I'll take those. And, um, on skateboard, we meet next week. Then we're not meeting in August, and in September, there's a joint meeting with all transportation-related boards. So we don't know yet exactly what date it's gonna be and where it's going to be, likely in Seattle. So, um, I know Joe and I, Joe and I will be there, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Sean?
Uh, the RFA, next RFA meeting is next week, so don't have an update, uh, from that, uh, standpoint, but, uh, I went to a Mariners game, uh, a couple of weeks back. Unfortunately, the Mariners lost, but during the innings, you know, they do these silly things where they, you know, take the caps and they move around the ball and they had that salmon run, which was kind of fun. If you haven't seen that, they had people dress up like salmon and they run and, and someone wins. Anyway, they have a scene where they're like, okay, let's find out where everyone's from, you know, and they put up the z- area codes up on the screen and there was Covington, two, five, three. You know, a big huge scream from the fans and stuff, so, you know, they go through everyone, four oh six in, um, Montana, Alaska, and Idaho, and then two, five, three flash up Covington, so it's like we're getting shout-outs at the Mariners game, so, anyway. That was a highlight of the, of the game. That's it.
Thanks, Sean. Beth?
Looking forward to Covington days. It's gonna be a lot of fun. And it was hot, like I said. Um, good question, as I'm thinking about this. Um, do we know if many of the new construction homes are being, um, built with AC in them? Do we have any idea how many?
I, I don't know that. Selena, do you know if the builders are putting air conditioning units in the newer homes being constructed?
Because we don't require that.
No.
Per code, right?
No, I don't. I think it's just gonna be what the owners want is when they put their package together. So these, a lot of these are custom builds. So they'll have the, the general layout and then the, the purchaser comes in and they do all their add-ons. I do know that some of the items at Lake Point, because they have to do some energy efficiencies, there could be some different type of cooling elements designed into that, but we haven't fully unpacked that yet. And I would also just state that the brand-new energy codes are very, very, um, detailed when it comes to those types of efficiencies and, um, thinking about tho- those climate needs as we progress. But I unfortunately don't have it like a number or a direct answer on that.
No, that's fine. I just thought maybe that could be a reason for declining. Um, yeah, I, a whole lot else, so.
Thank you, Beth. Christina?
Thank you. I too am very excited for, uh, Covington days. I didn't get to make it last year because we were out of state, but, um, hoping to go full-on in and I'll be in the parade probably with the Stroller this year, but we're all in, right? Um, at the last skip meeting, uh, Mayor Backus was pulled away for an emergency, but we did have a pretty cool, um, presentation from Beacon Development Group by Brian Lloyd about affordable housing and how it gets financed. It was actually pretty complicated. I didn't think it was as complicated, but there's, it's multi-level and multifaceted. Um, I have a whole presentation, but I probably couldn't regurgitate it if I was asked to. And then I have something near and dear to my heart that I wanted to jot down on paper, because when I say these things, sometimes I choke up, but, um, I wanted to share something that's close to me. Um, in December of nineteen ninety, my family landed on U.S. soil for the first time. An absolute dream come true. What drew them most to this country was not only the freedom it offered. In our case, it was religious persecution, but the fact that this was the best country in the entire world. Being American was such a prestigious title. If you were born one, you'll never quite understand. When my parents became citizens, it was a, it was celebrated in the community and beyond. It was respected. It was called patriotism, defined as a devotion to and vigorous support for one's country. As a child, I had the ability to honor, uh, the bil- the ability and honor to learn about and see patriotism firsthand at home, at school, and my neighborhood. I wonder sometimes if folks had more respect then for the price paid to grant us the freedoms to be whomever we desired, a freedom that has since been taken for granted. The celebration of Independence Day in our country is the celebration of fallen soldiers on whose shoulders America stands. Soldiers that should be celebrated and not forgotten. This statement is coming from an immigrant, one who has watched patriotism dismissed over the last decade. Last Thursday felt just like any other summer day. There wasn't a celebration we were ramping up for. There wasn't a buildup of anticipation, one that this holiday is worthy of. It was the birthday of the greatest country in the world, but no birthday cake, no candles. Please hear me loud and clear when I say that if anyone should be against the interruption that bring, that fireworks bring, it should be the one with the little baby who already doesn't get enough sleep, as is. What I'm attempting to relate to you is so much greater than fireworks. It's what they represent and have represented for centuries. Fourth of July fireworks symbolized the excitement and joy of a newly independent nation, and this tradition dates, dates back to the very first Independence Day in nineteen seventeen seventy-seven. They represent the rocket's red glare, its inner anthem, and they reflect the American spirit and the celebration of freedom. I wonder what those who paid a price greater than a twenty-four-hour noise and convenience would have to say to the dissolvement of patriotism in this state. It's not in every state. As humans, we are willing to pay the price of discomfort in one area to achieve something we want in another. Now, if outlawing, outlawing illegal fireworks actually worked, then windows in our neighborhoods wouldn't shake. Instead, what we took away is the joy on faces of families that followed restrictions and created a special and meaningful holiday while having fun and exemplifying patriotism. And what's worse than that, unfortunately, is that we didn't replace it with anything celebratory like other cities do. I drove out of Lake Wilderness on July third in tears as I watched them set up for their show. It was magnificent. I love our city and I'm proud of all that we have accomplished here together. I really am. I, I think I say it all the time. We're not perfect, however, and cannot get everything right every time, and that's okay. My hope is that we take actions that represent the strengths of our nation and community, not its weaknesses. And my prayer is that we keep the traditions alive that represent the American spirit and the joy of freedom. And that is all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Christina. Uh, let's see, last two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, Joe and I met, uh, with Cornerstone HOA. Three people showed up. Yeah, and Adam knows two of them.
We're outnumbered.
Yeah.
I don't know. Really, well, actually, there was four, because the property manager was there also for the HOA.
And she just kept her mouth quiet and just took notes. She didn't have a chance to speak anyway. Um, uh, we, I had, uh, the Southeast Mayor or South King County Mayor's meeting this morning. It went extremely well. Um, we talked about uh, the homeless camp that was in unincorporated King County between Auburn and Kent is now finally cleaned up after five years. They've all moved into the cities of Auburn and Kent, um, but they were welcome because they can offer services and help them, whereas out in unincorporated King County, they can't help them. So I, um, SCA, I don't know if the news has come out yet, but, um, they've found somebody to help fill one of the vacancies and they start next Monday. And then, uh, it was so nice to be able to drive over five sixteen today and not have to worry about oncoming traffic coming into your lane, because it was so tight. And I look forward to seeing that entire project getting completed. And then Covington days, I can't wait. Been involved with that since nineteen eighty-six. And, uh, looking forward to seeing that, uh, or no, I got involved in eighty-seven, excuse me. It started in eighty-six. But, uh, so be out at Real Life Church at nine, I believe. Is that correct? Okay.
Wait.
Start at nine?
No, it starts at ten.
Starts at ten.
Oh, I would say nine thirty.
Nine thirty? Okay. Alright, so we will see you on, all on Saturday morning to Tuesday. With that, that's all I have, and we'll move into our second public comment period. Even though nobody's here, I still have to read this. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. What do I got? I got fifteen minutes I need to spread out. Comments are directed to City Council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button for attendees participating by phone. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. If you grant permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. There's nobody in the audience wishing to address. Is there anybody online wishing to address council? I see nobody. I will close this public comment period. We have no executive session. This meeting is adjourned at eight oh two PM. Thank you.